Okay, I'd like to call the planning board meeting for August 6, 2019 to order. Welcome, everybody that's here tonight. I do want to let you know that we will be accepting public comments after we get through some of the master plan conversations. So if anybody has anything that they want to say tonight, that will be the spot to do it. So why don't we get started with the agenda? We have first, the consideration of minutes, and it sounds like for July 16th, those aren't available yet. So we'll look for those for next month. We also have the June 17th, 2019 joint minutes. So when we last met, we had discussed that we were going to take some time to review them, that we had seen, we had noticed some amendments that the board wanted to make on that. Any comments from board members on the current, the current set of minutes? Millie or Amy?
No, not the ones that were, no, not, not the ones we already went.
June 17th?
Yeah.
Okay.
These are the joint meeting?
The joint meeting.
I had a question and an issue, actually. There was a part where we deliberated on Brad Blanchett, who's a ZBA member, and I felt like there was a line in there that stated that we said something about Brad that we didn't. So that would be something big that I would love to change, because I would like them to be accurate and state what was actually said. It said that board members stress the need for better communication between the planning board and ZBA, which we did talk about, because we do want to have open communication always with the ZBA, and I think we had some of that last year. But then the sentence was merged with something that said, "And are concerned that Mr. Blanchett wouldn't be the best choice in this regard." And I feel that was never said.
Amy, do you know what page you're on?
Um, on page where it says deliberation, Brad Blanchet, what?
Okay.
Brad.
Six, seven.
So it's down near the bottom where it says, it's kind of in the middle. Board members stress the need for better communication between planning board and ZBA, which we always love to do. But then it continues and says, "And are concerned that Mr. Blanchett wouldn't be the best choice in this regard." And I know that, I mean, I never said that, and I didn't hear any other planning board say that. I feel we have a great relationship with Brad, and I feel having that in there, if he read it, or someone else read it, would feel that we didn't have a good relationship with Brad. So I would like to strike it. I wish the ZBA, I mean, the Board of Selectmen would do the same, because it is inaccurate.
Okay. And any other?
Um, for the most part, I mean, I was okay. It was kind of, I think she summarized it, which is why I think that went astray there. So I didn't, I didn't see anything major stand out, other than that. I don't know if anyone else did.
Okay. Well, we don't have Michelle at this point. We don't have Anthony. From my own perspective, I did go back and I listened to the tape, and I do think that there were some, a couple of comments that were attributed to the wrong person, and then there was obviously some of the discussion that I think, to your point, was sort of summarized and led to what I would call as mischaracterizations of what was actually deliberated at the time. So what, so I think for these minutes, when we first looked at them, the Board of Selectmen had already approved them, and then we had noted that we wanted to make some changes. So I don't think that, I think the inaccuracies we noticed are because they're under where our board is involved, and I don't think that the Board of Selectmen approved minutes they thought were inaccurate. I think we just found inaccuracies after the fact. But I would like to see minutes that we feel are accurate and represent what we said. So I think that the suggestion was that we develop our own minutes. Unfortunately, we're, it seems like it'd be easier to edit, just make a simple amendment. But in looking at the tape in general, I think that there were a couple of things that I noticed that I'd like to see redone. I don't necessarily want, I guess I have two concerns. One, I, my original concern was that, I think for the public, two sets of minutes are confusing. If you see the same meeting and you see two recollections of the same meeting, I think it's confusing. But it's certainly the prerogative of each board to write their minutes as they, as they wish. So from a planning board perspective, I think I would like to see, my proposal is, I would like to see, not the whole thing done, but I think from the deliberation point, starting with, I think it's, everything's fine. And look, when I looked at the video, I thought that, you know, every, the recollection, everybody's skill sets were fine. I think it didn't get, it wasn't until the deliberation section that I think I started to notice some things that were not necessarily characterized, and a couple of places attributed properly. So if we could, my proposal is that we have Elaine, just look from deliberation on, unless either board member here felt that there was anything prior to deliberation that didn't look accurate. Did you see anything?
No, I would agree with that. So have Elaine do deliberation of Fran, deliberation of Millie, and deliberation of Brad?
Yeah, from that section on.
Yeah.
So that the, so that everything will stay the same. So if that someone in the, in the community were to look at the minutes, that there wouldn't be like differences in skill sets, that the skills would all be the same. It'd really just be the deliberation component. So I feel like that wouldn't be a disservice to residents who are trying to follow along, that they could at least-
Right.
-have everything up to deliberation. And it would also help correct that from our perspective, to something like, do you have any comments?
Yeah. No, I don't think I can make comments on it, because I was on the other side.
You can add, Millie was a superstar.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's important, because that's how we based our vote.
Right, right. Now, I wonder, is this something, do we want Michelle to weigh in at all, since Millie cannot? Or I guess we don't need a majority, we're not really voting to do anything, other than asking Elaine to?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's fine. I mean, I'll just contact Elaine tomorrow and ask her if she can, you know, work on a set from the deliberation to the conclusion of the meeting.
Yep, so let's see, the joint meetings?
Or you all sat with, because I think there was a summary, or nominations, and then vote to appoint, was that okay? Or want me to have her do that portion too? That's on the last page of the joint minutes.
No, I think the votes are accurate, and certainly that's the most important, that that be reflection, an accurate reflection, as far as the votes are concerned, so.
So the nomination section and the vote to appoint is okay, but the deliberation section?
Yes, I think I would like, and if the rest of the board agrees, to have deliberation redone. And then that'll be respectful of her time as well, because I don't want to take uptown resources redoing, recreating the wheel. So that would be something that maybe for next time, I don't know if she has time or not, so.
Yep, well, I mean, I'll, you know, I'll ask her tomorrow, and then it depends on, you know, when you meet in September, I mean, which we'll talk about later, so.
Okay. All right, great. So that, unless, and if Michelle comes and has things to add, she certainly can.
Okay.
If she, is that okay, if Michelle comes and has something else, if outside of deliberation? I assume, I didn't hear from her on the minutes at all, so I don't know if she has anything. But we'll just leave it like that for now. Okay. If you just wait until the public comments, right, after the master plan?
I don't want public comments.
That's okay, when we get to the master plan comments, that's when I'll take public comments. Okay, master plan conversation. So Michelle is going to lead the discussion. Where, Amy, would you mind?
Sure.
Stepping in a little bit?
I didn't prep for this, so, let's see.
Well, why don't we work, so just to recap on the master plan discussion, so the point is for us to just discuss highlights, any like critical debates that were held at Master Plan Steering Committee, anything that we should be aware of, any impact on planning board, in terms of what we should be thinking about for our plans, any extremes that you think could be, not you personally, but just to recap on the type of conversation, any quick hits or extremes. And then if we see anything that, you know, could be a short-term, medium-term, long-term goal, that we could flag it that way, as part of the conversation.
Okay.
So you don't have to format it that way, but that's just a recap of the type of discussion that we want to have.
I mean, I definitely prepped and read all the master plan, but I didn't prep to be the leader. But I think I'll start in natural, cultural, and historical, because if Michelle comes, I think she'd want to talk about the land use and housing more.
Okay.
And from my point of view, I didn't have a lot of comments for natural, cultural, and historical, mostly because I think Norm went through it, and, and I agreed with most. I have a big check near NCH 1, which is preserve and enhance the natural landscapes of the community, including farmlands. And when I read down those, we do a lot of that with open space, with conservation restrictions, and reaching out to farms, and when you get down to 1-3, the removal of dams, I know that's something that Ashley's working on, she added that. And then talks about protection and flood plain, so I think all those NCH 1 are great ideas. I don't know if Millie or Carrie, if you have any questions about anything in NCH 1, which is preserve and enhance the natural landscapes of the community. It was definitely something important to the, to the townspeople.
Okay.
And being on open space, I see that they really do a good job proactively working on all that.
Okay.
So if, if, do you agree, or is there any questions?
No. Oh, shoot, and Anthony submitted some feedback as well.
He didn't have any on that, his mostly land use.
Okay, okay. All right, yep.
So he, because I have his, and actually, that, the version that you have in front of you, that has today's version, that has some yellow, those are Anthony's questions.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So he didn't have anything on, on natural resource, and open space, we had already done, and transportation, we didn't have any facilities.
Okay.
Okay, for NCH 2, maintain and expand the protection of Northborough's historic resources, including buildings, structures, landscapes, and documents. So the action item one is to prepare a historic preservation plan for the town of Northborough. Two is to continue to promote an awareness of Northborough's history, and it's a longer sentence, but it's basics. Promote the protection of antique properties, which includes buildings, structures, documents, artifacts, landscapes, and agricultural lands. The one thing I could see with that is we have a small zone in Northborough called Main Street Residential, and it goes from the library to Stone's Motorcycle Shop, and those are a lot of the historical homes. And a lot of them have been converted to two and three families, but they haven't been torn down. They've been converted internally. And I really think, because our duplex bylaw allows tier downs, that Main Street Residential really should be a conversion, because I really think that's what puts those homes in jeopardy, is if someone comes in, decides to tear it down, and build a new modern house. Like, that's like probably our biggest area of historical homes. So that was one thing that I thought zoning and planning board could do, is to protect that area. And I think there are plenty of homes there right now that are two and three bedroomed that have protected the home and the way it looks, but still, they were allowed to make it multifamily. And that was a big selling point, when they did the houses next to Trinity, when Norm promoted turning those into Habitat for Humanity. It was saving the outside, it was saving the historical nature of that area.
Okay. So one question I did have, and I don't know if it fits in here, was there a discussion about design review guidelines for a historic area of town? Like, that would be different from?
I don't think we have any out, it would have to be a historic district, right, Kathy?
Well, we have design guidelines-
Yep.
-for, for, you know, if you're in particular talking about downtown and Main Street Residential. So that's all incorporated into the design guidelines-
Okay.
-that we have today.
But if you're not a business, you could do what you want on a residential, from a residential.
For residential, you can, yes.
So we don't have guidelines if you were, if you bought a historic?
No, we don't, no, no. The town, at this point, doesn't control what somebody, the design of their, you know, personal home.
Yeah.
I thought that came up for some reason.
There's only one historic district, and it was one house, right?
Well, we have a couple of historic districts.
Oh, okay.
One is, it has multiple buildings in it around the Unitarian Church, and then there is another, a single building, a historic district on Whitney Street, which just contains one home. But being in historic district, they, you have to go before the Historic District Commission if you want to do anything on the outside of your, you know, building, or, or house. And so you do have to go through the Historic District Commission. And I think there's only been a couple, in my experience, there's really only been a couple houses that have had to go through that process, that did alterations to the outside of their house.
Okay, so even if we change the district, the process is still to go to the, not, not to go to design review, either way?
Correct. For single family or duplexes, design review isn't involved. Design review is in multifamily, you know, for, for Main Street Residential, for the downtown neighborhood district, and then the commercial districts, and the industrial district.
Okay.
Okay, so that was just one thing that I had thought of. So for NCH 4, NCH 2-4, expand the historic assets inventory to include additional resource types of time periods, geographical locations, utilize the expanded inventory to identify additional assets for protection. Like, I think that would fall under Norm and the historical. Explore ways to incentivize restoration, rehabilitation, and beautification efforts for historic properties throughout town. So that would have to do with like design review, I would think.
Not necessarily, I mean, it could, but I think that has more to do with, you know, are there tax incentives that the Historic District Commission, you know-
Okay.
...to help to educate people on, that where people, you know, may get tax breaks if they, you know, do certain things to their house. But, you know, it's, it's a very, you know, it's, it's not anything that, that this board or the zoning board is involved with, it's mainly through the Historic District Commission of each community that, that works on that.
Does anyone have any questions on NCH 2?
No.
Do you have any, Millie?
No.
Okay, so NCH 3, repurpose surplus town-owned buildings and facilities for community needs. Action item one, identify short and long-term planning goals for properties such as Whitecliffs, Westboro State Hospital, 13 Church Street, Boundary Street, and 4 West Main Street. Two, where appropriate, utilize surplus municipally-owned properties as community spaces while reuse studies are in progress. And three, identify and support reuse efforts for town-owned historic properties, prioritizing future use by the town, community groups, and cultural organizations. I mean, it sounds, sounds good to me.
And the properties listed here, are the, is that the inventory of town-owned buildings, or just a sampling of them?
I think it's just a sampling.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're already going through Whitecliffs now, right? There's already Whitecliffs Committee.
Yeah.
13 Church Street is the old fire station. Boundary Street's being talked about all the time. I think there are a lot of people who want to use it for different things.
Mm-hmm.
And 4 West Main Street is the old town hall, so, yeah, it's just a sampling. I would think they would start maybe a feasibility on 4 West Main Street next year, at some point, because 20, is it 2022? It comes back to the town if the town chooses to repurchase it. Is it $100 or $10,000? Somewhere around that. But I know it comes back to the town in-
Twenty twenty.
-two and a half years, so I think the process of deciding what to do with it should definitely start soon.
And did the committee discuss that? Was that part of the discussion?
No.
No.
No. Do you have any questions on any of the other? NCH 4 is coordinate efforts among cultural, historical, and environmental organizations. And the first one is continue cooperating with local organizations and committees for the education and preservation of our historical heritage. And it lists some of the groups with Northborough Historical Society, the Free Library, the Trails Committee, Open Space, Housing Partnership, as well as schools, religious organizations, and local businesses. NCH 4-2, evaluate the potential of becoming a certified local government, which will allow Northborough to participate directly in the review and approval of national register nominations, as well as provide additional access to preservation funding and technical services, improve coordination with the planning and building departments regarding notifications of potential antique demolitions, and prompt investigation of zoning changes to promote antique property restorations. That was a long one.
Yeah.
I didn't know if I should stop and say it's a long one. NCH 4-3, work with the Downtown Planning Revitalization Committee, which is mentioned, we haven't mentioned it yet, but it's under probably land use, work, or, or economic development. But work with the Downtown Planning Revitalization Committee to avoid and mitigate potentially adverse impacts on historic homes along Main Street and neighboring streets. And that's where I put a little note about the conversion versus tier down. NCH 4-4, investigate opportunities to hire interns who have an interest in natural, historic, and cultural resources to support our local preservation projects, which include seeking possible planning sources. I think it's a great idea, because it's a, a cheap way to get help. Maybe they can apply for grants, or.
Would that be from even the high school, maybe? Or was that, or just talk about?
It would probably be college. There are a lot of college students that, I don't know if they would want high school students.
Okay.
Maybe.
Did Norm have any thoughts on any of these, or did any normal?
No, I think the whole committee agreed that they were all good ideas.
Okay. I don't think Anthony had anything. Just in terms of a historic preservation plan, that's something that is not current? Do we have a version at all, an old one, or any, or is that not developed at all?
Do we have one already for the community?
Yeah, any sort of previously existing historic preservation plan?
The, no, not necessarily a, you know, a full-blown sort of, I, I always refer to them as like mini master plans, you know, for each, you know, whether it's the department or the board, you know, that particular subject. But the Historic District Commission has done, you know, several studies, they have their inventory, those are all up on their website. But one of the things that they would like to do is, is again, an overall, like in-depth, you know, historic report for the, for the community.
Okay, and so in terms of how the planning board can support these efforts, it sounds like the Historic District Commission takes, has the lion's share of work. Is there anything in here that would require planning board support, in terms of zoning or anything, or are these things that?
Well, I, I mean, I think, yes, that the planning board would, would be, you know, involved either directly or indirectly with, with the majority of, of these, you know, goals and recommendations. But the next thing that the Master Plan Steering Committee is going to do at the, and Amy, I don't know if you, I was just looking, and I apparently didn't put it in my phone, when the, or Jason, maybe, I don't know if I, if I gave it out to the committee yet, but we're going to meet at the library?
September 12.
What was it?
September 12.
The 12th, okay.
That's, I looked it up today.
Okay.
And you had sent out an email that the draft of the whole document's going to go out on August 20th.
Yeah.
And we had 10 days to reply, and then the meeting was going to be September 12.
It's the 12th, okay, that's what I didn't have in my calendar.
I'm just hoping 10 days is enough, because that's going to be a big plan, and like, colleges starting, schools are starting, like, it's before Labor Day. I'm hoping 10 days is enough for the steering committee to be able to review it and get back comments.
The, so, but for now, the plan-
Yeah.
-is that on the 12th, the committee will also be reviewing the draft implementation plan, and Carrie, that's where, you know, there's going to be divided up into the, you know, short, mid, long-term goals, and then what department and/or board would be, you know, the lead on that, and who else would be involved. So I think once we all see that-
Well, that'll be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that then we can, you know, the, the first crack at it will be, you know, the, the steering committee, and, and then, you know, as to whether or not they, you know, agree, disagree, you know, move things around. But that's what's going to be done partially on the, on the 12th.
Okay, that'll be good.
September 12th.
All right, do you want to move on to economic development, then?
Um, I guess so, sure, say.
You don't have to, I mean, maybe just read the-
Yeah, trying to decide if I should start with land use, or the weakest-
Well, either way, but I'm just thinking, if you just read the main bucket, unless you think it's important to-
Sure, well, I had a lot of notes with economic development.
Oh, okay, well, I have.
But I'm trying to think of it, which way is easier to start with land use or economic development? But I'll start with economic development.
If you want.
I just have to read my-
Just have to read the last two.
Notes fast. Okay, for economic development, define downtown in terms of its geography. Example, downtown business district, appearance, branding, and function. Goal one is to create a downtown planning revitalization committee, made up of downtown business owners, representatives from town boards, and other stakeholders. And when I read that, I think that should start right away. And I know Kathy just said, which is the short-term goals and long-term goals. But when you get down to goal number three, or recommendation three, it talks about creating a fresh and cohesive identity brand for new downtown areas, such as sinus, signage, facades, wayfaring. There's MDI, MDI grants, and those come out in October. And I'm looking, a lot of the surrounding towns have already been allocating these, and why wait another year? Like, when I went through today, I went through the old surveys, I started with the master plan from the beginning until now, and I went back to the original surveys, the original meetings, and the majority of what the consultants found were downtown, downtown, downtown. And it was on the original master plan. I just think we should start now. Like, why not apply for that grant? It's not really, you know, a big deal to have signage, facades, and who knows if we'll be here the year after? I just don't, I know I'm jumping ahead, but.
Well, speaking of signage and brand, one thing for consideration is just, so say we come out with this cohesive identity and brand, and we do this big splash, I think it's important to consider maintenance, because even driving into town, that welcome to Northborough sign is now like covered in weeds. It looks sad. So if we're going to bother with some sort of like, brand-
Right.
-you know, ta-da, then we should be, you know, have pride and maintain it, and sort of, I don't know who's responsible for those things, but maybe as some sort of feedback to bring back, just-
Okay.
-maintenance, if we bother with those things.
Yep. So I skipped to, but it's explore potential acquisitions or land deals to appropriately scale the downtown. And I do think that's a huge goal, and I think that's a great goal to have, because I feel our downtown has a lot of very little lots.
Mm-hmm.
And the people who come in now need more room. Like, 45 West Main, that turned into the town common, they came in front of the planning board a couple of times, but there wasn't enough room to fit a building, and parking, and landscaping. So I think it's an important goal, that maybe if there are a couple lots that can merge to make one better lot for development, it'd be a good idea. So I think that's a great goal to have. But that wouldn't be the planning board, it would have to be like the town and the selectmen, right, to approve actually purchasing pieces of property downtown. But I think it's a good goal to have on the master plan. ED 1-4 is conduct a parking study. I think that's huge, too, because a lot of people say there's nowhere to park downtown. ED 1-5, explore the potential for repurposing 4 West Main Street, which is the old town hall, as an anchor for the downtown. Conduct a feasibility study to identify options and recommendations. That, I think, should be a short-term goal, since, as I just said, it's coming up in two years, that the town will have to decide what to do with it. ED one six, undertake a study to explore the potential of designing, or designated, downtown as a business improvement district, which would create a special assessment district where property owners would agree to organize and finance services above and beyond those already provided by the town. This was one thing that I actually was against, because, but I'm not, I don't know, if I'm totally sold on it now, I'd have to ask Millie, but I thought, we have a hard enough time getting businesses to come to our downtown, so why would we tax them more and scare them away? But Justin, who works a lot with Worcester, maybe it's different because it's Worcester, said their downtown businesses really like that, and all the businesses donate, or not donate, pay a fee, and I think they use those funds to, I don't know what they do with them, they do it to fix up the downtown, they use the funds for special.
I think the way it works is it's sort of like if you're in a condo complex and you contribute to that, and then everybody benefits, but I think the businesses would have to see that as a benefit.
Right.
So.
Like, before they did that, I think you'd have to ask the businesses that are down there, like.
Right.
What would you think about that? Because your business already looks really nice, so.
Right, so it would be, you know.
Right.
In agreement with, with a collection of businesses, but I also think it would help that, you know, seeing the businesses next to them that maybe haven't been paying attention to it, it would improve the ones that are doing it, so, but I, I think it would be a volunteer thing, you know?
Right.
Those who like pay into it might receive some of the benefits of it.
Right. So Justin, who's worked with it, thought it was a good thing to do, but I'm still not sure, I think verdict's out.
I, yeah, and I would say if you mandate it, it would be discouraged, probably.
Right.
You know, as a, if you told me that I had to do that, I would be.
Right.
Yeah.
Like, I think someone like a CVS.
Put a lot into my business that way.
Right, someone like CVS is a big corporation, so they might have the money to do that.
Right.
But someone who's playing month to month and is trying to keep their business afloat, they're not going to have the extra money to help their neighbor fix up their lot.
Yeah.
So.
As with anything, you know, there's a process to this.
Yeah.
And there, this is a very successful program that the state sponsors, and there's several communities, not, not a lot, but there's several communities in Massachusetts that have very successfully used, you know, the bid, the business improvement district. And there, you know, it's involved, and it's there, it certainly does require buy-in, because otherwise it wouldn't be successful, and, you know, it's offered here as that, that this is a possibility, you know, as we look at, you know, improving, you know, the economic vitality, you know, of the, of the community, that this could be one of the tools that, that, you know, that the community looks into, so.
And maybe the business owners could come together as the focus group to help.
Oh, yeah, they, it would absolutely, you know, again, it would be part of the bigger picture of, you know, doing a downtown, you know, plan.
Right.
And, and all the components that, that go into that, and, excuse me, you know, we would, you know, if this was something, you know, certainly we would get a lot more detail on this, but, you know, again, big picture, you know, master plan way up here, this is one of the tools that the community might want to take, you know, advantage of.
Yeah.
But, but again, it's not, you know, it's, it's done in cooperation with the businesses.
Yep. Because the MDI grant, sounds like it would do some of the similar things, it would, MDI grant, I don't know a lot about it, I tried to look it up last night, and it sounds like it gives a grant money to the downtown businesses?
Well, I don't know what you're referring to as, Amy, MDI.
Oh, um, it was on the government website, I'd have to look it up. It has to do with downtown.
Improvement?
Improvement, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it was maybe municipal downtown improvement grants, and I think it, if you applied and got the money, it would help with your downtown improvement.
It is various, I mean, there, there is various grants that the state offers, they, the Department of Housing and Community Development has a very robust downtown initiative, and downtown means something different to every community. So there, there's, you know, every year, there's different grants, you know, some years they're available, some years they're not, sometimes they just focus on the facade, sometimes they focus on the overall planning, sometimes they focus on like wayfinding and branding, you know, as we talked about earlier, so.
So do they contact the planning board when certain grants are available? Like, sometimes we seem to miss them and say, oh, well, that was last month, and I looked up, these grants seem to go in October, and they're awarded next year. Like, does Central Mass, do they contact the town and say?
No, the state, the state contacts the, the planning departments and the town administrator's office of, of every town when, when grant cycles become available.
I was wondering, has the planning board, can you send them to us? I mean, I'd be interested in seeing what grants are.
When I, when I receive them, yeah.
Yeah, if you could, I don't know about the rest of you, but forward us the information on.
Yeah.
Grants.
So Anthony just had, it looks like he just wanted clarification, and we've already talked about whether it was a tax to business owners, and whether we should, how we can incentivize businesses to set up shop here, and be careful of burdening them with costs. So that kind of sounds like what we've discussed.
All right, ED one dash seven, look for the opportunities to incorporate other public gathering places, such as the Town Common and Library into the downtown framework. Advance efforts to connect gathering places and businesses for improved walkability and accessibility. I just, I guess the sentences go, but I didn't know what other public gathering places are, but then it said such as Town Common and Library. I don't know if there are any other public gathering places downtown. So I guess this is trying to link them together, and I don't know if there are any other ways to link them other than sidewalks, so I'm not sure what the goal, what, what that action item would actually look like, what it would do, other than maybe improve sidewalks. ED two, promote redevelopment opportunities for vacant or underutilized commercial and industrial properties. When going through the surveys today, I did notice that was one, that people put high on their list, that they wanted vacant and underutilized commercial properties developed. So the action item one, evaluate the need for an ability to sustain a dedicated economic development staff to actively engage in the town's business community, promote the town's economic attractiveness, and coordinate the town's economic development efforts. We discussed this at the master plan, and I'm not sure if economic development staff is in the budget, but even if we didn't do that, we should start an economic development committee. Some towns do that, where there are different town representatives and business representatives. So I'd say, I think it's a great idea to have an economic development staff, but if we can't, we should at least have a committee and discuss it, because we don't have one here in Northborough right now, we have an industrial development committee, and I think there might be two people on it, and there aren't even minutes, they haven't had minutes for like five, six, seven years, so I don't know when the last time was that they met. And I was going through other towns' websites, and they had websites on, you know, come to our town, these are the properties we have available, and this is what you can do here, and a lot of good ideas that I think we can incorporate here. ED two dash two, consider engaging a real estate advisory firm to create a redevelopment strategy for the town's business districts. The strategy can incorporate analysis of appropriate uses, scale, dimension, design, as well as the infrastructure and services needed to support these redevelopments. When this, when this ED two dash two was first in the master plan, it's been changed. Since then, it did point out Business West, that there are some uses in Business West that are industrial and have been industrial, so one thing might to be to look at those and, uh, the appropriate uses, and how do we, how do we get Business West to be commercial? Was the way I read it, but it's changed, so it includes all the businesses, so to look at Business West, Business East, and the downtown, and is there a redevelopment strategy to make them work? Do we have the right uses, scale, design? I don't know. And do we need a real estate advisory firm to do that?
What, what is a real estate advisory firm?
I don't know.
I know it was, I was like, I underlined.
Do you know what it is, Kathy?
Sure, there's, I mean, first of all, this has already been adopted by the master plan steering committee, so, you know, there's no.
It is.
Right. So the, there are real estate firms, you know, typically when people think of real estate, you know, you just think of selling your, you know, your own home, or, you know, that it's about residential development, but there are advisory firms that do, you know, all sorts of services, you know, financial impacts, whether it's for private sector or, you know, public sector, you know, look at the financial impacts of a particular development, financial impacts of a particular, you know, zoning that, that a town or a, you know, landowner or developer may want to enact for, for a community. Also do, you know, market studies as far as what, what your zoning, you know, might allow today versus what is out there and working in the market, you know, what's economically viable, versus, you know, everybody wants a, you know, an ice cream stand and a bookstore in their downtown, and that, you know, doesn't work anymore, you know, unless you're in a very, you know, tourist, you know, driven environment. So, you know, so those firms can do that, you know, for a community too. I mean, it's, but they, you know, I mean, it's pages of, of, you know, what these firms can do for communities or, you know, private sector.
Anthony's comment was just, he thought it would, he suggested it'd be more efficient and productive to use state resources and model after other towns who successfully redeveloped their downtowns, was his comment there.
Yeah, and one of the things, you know, that you have to, you know, you always have to think about is, you know, we, I mean, first of all, a downtown or any zoning district, you know, should always be evolving, you know, zoning itself is not something that's stagnant or shouldn't be stagnant, but, you know, when you, when you look at a successful downtown, I mean, one downtown may be more, may be successful for a completely different reason than another town, and, you know, and, you know, I mean, there's so many factors, you know, the, the, the population, the, you know, closeness or not closeness to, you know, public transportation and, you know, interstate highways, the, the economics of the region, you know, what, what, what are the salary ranges.
Drive, yeah.
Of people that live in the area, or, or, you know, do people come to the area, and what, what's their salary makeup, and, and, you know, and what are they looking for, and so forth? I mean, there's, there's, there's so much that can go into what, what makes a downtown successful or not, and again, it's different for every community. So that's, you know, and, and state resources, yeah, I mean, we, we always look for, for.
That's the first one.
Now, we were talking about this, and I don't know if this is the right place to put it, but I was looking, and I was thinking, you know, how do you get people to stay? I know that Northborough's not a resort town or anything, but you go to like the Lakes Region, New Hampshire, Meredith Chamber of Commerce, and they say, stay, eat, and shop. Like, I think we could do something on a website too, we get a huge amount of people in for Tugus, and if I was coming to Tugus, I would look around, okay, what does Northborough have that I can stay and do other things? Let's go to Se La Vie and have pastry and coffee, let's go to, you know, somewhere else, and I just think that if we put something on a website, it doesn't have to be a town website, but maybe use the Northborough local forest or whatever, but just something that stay, eat, play, and so when people go up to Tugus and say, now, what else can I do here, this is what's in the area, because my friend actually works at Tugus, and they're always asking her, where should I go for lunch when I leave? So, and I know myself, when I leave and go out of town, I look up like Meredith, New Hampshire, and it tells you where to stay, eat, and play, and that's, I follow those recommendations, so I thought, Tugus, like the lines in the fall, coming in and out, and I worked there for a while too, and they're coming from all over the state, like to find, these are our trails, where you're here, if you want to hike with your child, you can do this, and stop here and go there, I just, I don't know, I thought if we had a really cool website, people might stay.
Like, things to do in Northborough or?
Yeah. I don't know.
So for, in the interest of time, do we want to, so see where members have feedback on certain items, like start with the like main.
Instead of giving my ideas.
Topic, and then, like the main, so the main header for say ED three, and then if members have any specific feedback on the items under it? Unless you want to have.
Oh, no, sorry, I keep going on.
That's okay.
I just, for the past couple of days, I was reviewing this and trying to come up with ideas, so I was already trying to implement it.
If you have feedback, that's great, but if we don't, we don't have to talk about it, if we don't have feedback, unless you disagree.
Right. Okay. So I guess there's three more, does anybody have any more input for three, four, or five?
Well, do you want to, oh, no, nope.
For the action items? I think for the planning board on ED two dash four, maybe we can get a list of how many are left for industrial site zones, it talks about marketing and develop industrial zones, and for me, I'd be interested, how many of them do we actually have last, left? Okay, and number five is mitigation, we've talked about that a lot on the planning board, and my question for Kathy tonight was, does something have to be added to the bylaw to do mitigation?
Well, it depends on what kind of mitigation you're talking about, but if, if the town wanted to pursue, you know, something like development impact fees, that ultimately that would end up being a zoning bylaw, but, you know, you would certainly have involvement from, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the financial, you know, planning committee, because again, impact fees can, they're very positive for the community as a whole, for the residents, but businesses sometimes can see them as, well, you know, if Northborough has development impact fees, you know, I'll go to Northborough, or I'll go to Marlborough, or, you know, if, if you're a, you know, more of a local developer.
Right.
But, you know, if they're done, if they're done properly and, and fairly, you know, it, it might make sense for the community to, you know, to look at something like that.
I just think for the big ones, like FedEx and all those down there.
Well, with an impact fee though, it, you have to be.
Across the board.
You have to be across the board, so whether it's, you know, a three thousand square foot, you know, ice cream store or FedEx, the, of course, they're not paying the same amount in impact fees, but the formula is being applied, so, so it's all relative to your size and, and, you know, the, the amount of traffic that you create, I mean, there's many factors involved in looking at an impact fee, a true impact fee.
And Justin is good too, I sat next to him a couple of times, and Justin works with this too, he works for the company that did this plan, and he said he was surprised Northborough didn't have it, because it, when his job, that's the first thing, it's like a given, there's always an impact fee, so he didn't think it.
Yeah, I mean, they, his firm, I mean, you know, it's worldwide, well, at least in, in the United States, but they, you know, when you go to Cambridge, Framingham, New Hick, Watertown, Boston, you know, they, they almost all certainly probably have some sort of impact fee.
Okay.
That, you know, is applied to the, to the development.
Okay, so this action item here that was added, it would have to, it would be added to every single business, because again, I don't want to scare away business either.
Right. And is there a designation where those things, where the impact fees go to, or?
That's all part of the formula, so again, it's not, what used to happen, not just in our community, but it's very common in, it used to be very common in, in other communities, it's sort of like, you know, whatever department, you know, sort of, you know, worked with the developer first, you know, then, and they, they expressed what their needs were, and, and, you know, the developer might have said, okay, well, that, you know, that's, that's all part of the cost of doing business and coming into a community, and we expect that, but then what you end up doing with that, it's like sort of department against department.
Right.
Because it's like who, who contacted the developer first, or who, you know, who was able to talk to the right person, so when you have an impact fee by law, again, it's across the board, so, you know, you figure out, you know, ahead of time, that, you know, X percentage goes to the schools, X percentage police, fire, DPW, you know, you know, I'm sure there's other departments involved, but, I mean, those are the, those are the three or four departments you can typically think of, you know, the impact on, you know, public safety, the impact on the roads and the services, and. You know, the impact on, you know, public safety, the impact on the, the roads and the services and- schools.
Traffic, yeah.
But Avalon, they got, the town received a fire state, a fire truck? Was that considered-
What we did with Avalon is we had, um, we tried to be as, um, as, as fair and, and open as possible. We had a mitigation, um, uh, committee that we put together. Um, so again, that it wasn't a grab of, well, well, gee, that, you know, this is gonna, you know, there's gonna be a lot of, you know, schoolchildren, so the, the highest impact will be to the schools. Well, no, it won't, because, you know, now there's all these residents, so, you know, there's gonna be ambulance calls, you know, that are gonna greatly increase. So, there, you know, what, what we looked at was at a, you know, per unit basis, you know, we talked to other communities, uh, you know, again, always looking for examples, um, at what, at what may or may not have been successful in other communities, so. Um, and we, you know, did a lo- a lot of appropriating as far as, you know, what we believe to be the impacts versus, you know, how, what percentage of, you know, the, the mitigation that we receive should go to which department. But, under a true impact by law, you know, you, you have that all figured out.
So, it can be done case by case, not just, it doesn't, there-
No, not, not anymore.
Oh, it changed?
No, no. Well, it's not so much that it changed, but the, 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 um, the effective fair way to do it is through impact fees. And originally, in Massachusetts, impact fees were considered a tax. And, and they're, through the court system, they're no longer considered a tax, they're considered a fee. And so, um, that's, that's where towns can, can enact a fee.
So, if Avalon came today, you wouldn't have been able to ask for the fire, um, truck?
Um, w- y- sure, we, I mean, we would sa- we would still look at, you know, um, you know, mitigation for a, for a large scale-
Okay.
-um, development, but, but the, the best way, the, the true way to do it is through an impact.
Okay. But it's good to know you still could do it on big, if you didn't have the impact fee, you could still do it on big developments. Not to be unfair, but they do add more to like, to the road, say like a FedEx, you know? The road's gonna take a bigger hit from the big trucks. Okay, but I'll move on. Um, ED three, oh, d- does anybody have any questions on any of those?
No.
After I took all that time. ED three, grow and connect local business community and position it to be resilient in the face of changing economic conditions. Okay. So, under that, there are three action items. Does anyone have any questions? I'm trying to move faster.
No.
Okay. So, then ED four, position the town to attract more visitors and commercial tax revenue. And there are three action items under there. The first one, I don't even know if we need a market analysis. I mean, I'll leave it there, but it's, talks about attracting hospitality uses to the Route nine area, which I think would be great, and I think it would be, it would work, but I don't know if we even need to pay to do a market analysis.
Well, if you don't have a market analysis, you don't know what's going to work. You know, I mean, you can just slap hotel-
Right.
-to your zoning bylaw, and then for ten years, people criticize the town because a hotel has never come. But my god, you have it in your zoning, what, what are you doing wrong that it's, that it's not coming? Well, if you possibly, if you did a market analysis, you might have found out that, you know, again, the location of the town, the economics of the town, that, that a hotel wouldn't work in, in that particular community. So.
My daughter and son both worked at Apex this year, but, um, this summer, and, um, the crowds they got from the baseball team. I'm like, if we had a hotel, and even in new Friendly's, I know Friendly's failed in Westboro, but if we had a Friendly's over there in a hotel, I think they'd be great for the baseball, cause my daughter did work at Friendly's, she would get sixty kids, like, teams of sixty at night from the baseball. And I'm like, oh, it's a bummer, cause they're going all the way from Northborough to Marlborough to stay, to get ice cream, and so, um, I don't know, I do think even, I think it would do great over there if we could do a hotel or, or Friendly's. But that's just personal opinion, and my daughter never had a dull moment there. The frenzy machine would break, and the manager made them storm by hands, there were so many people there. So, um, but moving on, it talks about mixed use. And- Develop master plans for Westboro State Hospital, Boundary Street.
So, I remember some discussion around this, whether or not, like, if this were to be like a ten, fifteen, twenty year plan, do, there was, I thought there was debate back and forth of whether we specify things this detailed, is that, was that an argument?
We did, a lot came out, a lot of the specifics came out, but this one stayed in, and I don't remember the reasoning behind it. For publicly controlled sites such as Westboro State Hospital and Northborough Boundary Street, develop master plans to address key needs, to include economic development, housing, recreation, and other possibilities.
So, obviously, we've seen it's important to keep a detailed-
Um, I guess, do you remember Cathy or Jason why we left those in and we took out others?
The, um-
ED four dash three.
Right, as far as the, um, Boundary Street, you know, there's, there's non-stop talk-
Right.
-you know, amongst the various boards and departments about what to do with Boundary Street. Um, you know, everyone looks at it as, thinking that it's just, you know, vacant land sitting there with nothing, you know, going on or no plan for it. And, you know, there's a very specific plan as to wipe out, you know, the property on Boundary Street, and then the property on Main Street with, you know, purchased, and, um, you know, all having to do with, um, you know, sewer capacity and, and potential sewer development, you know, slash economic development for the community. And, um, you know, there is, there is ongoing litigation with the city of Marlborough about the, the Westley Treatment Plant. That all ties into, once that is resolved, then, you know, the community can look at whether or not that land is still necessary or no longer necessary for sewer capacity. And then, and then you start to look at, again, it's town owned, it's, it's, you know, many acres. And, and then the community will be able to say, okay, now that we either, A, continue to need it for sewer capacity, so that's the end of that conversation, or the conclusion of that conversation, or we no longer need it for that, so now, what are we gonna do with it? How, how are we gonna, you know, sort of mini-master plan, you know, that, that property? And then the same with the Westboro State Hospital, um, that's still an unknown. Um, it's not clear from the state exactly how much of the property they would be willing to dispose of that's, you know, considered Westboro State Hospital but located in Northborough. And so, once that's resolved with the state, you know, then the community has some choices to make again. Looking at, okay, how, you know, are, is it, you know, five acres that, that we're looking at, or is it, you know, thirty acres? Um, uh, we believe that there is a building involved, and, um, you know, an existing building that's, you know, shuttered over there. Um, but, you know, we would then look at, okay, what's, what do we do with that? You know, if, if we were to acquire that property, what, what would we do with that property? I mean, first you'd figure out the use before you acquired it, but, um, uh, that, you know, that's the normal course of action.
But as of right now, though, we have no, Marlborough's saying no to giving us more sewer capacity, right? I mean, that was the last I heard.
Well, I mean, we, we have, you know, there's a, a longstanding agreement and contract, and, and there's, um, you know, there's many levels involved here, you know, with the, with the city and also with the, um, federal government, with the EPA. And, um, so, we, we have, we have a significant amount of sewer capacity that we have not used yet, that's been allocated to us, but how it gets paid for, and what share we have of it, I mean, it's very, very involved. And, and that's part of the location.
Okay.
Okay, so. Just for, in the interest of time-
Yep.
What if we, let's see, the next meeting for master plan is September third?
September twelfth.
Twelfth.
Oh, sorry. We're September third.
What's October, August twentieth, is that a meeting or is that not a meeting?
August twentieth is when we get the draft, the whole draft of the whole master plan.
Okay. August twentieth is the draft, September twelfth is the next meeting.
So, the dates Carrie that I had, or I mean, all, you know, the, the, all the board, you know, Amy and Millie, the, um, I mean, typically, you know, again, in the past, you know, sort of once a school year, everything's around the school year, you know, we, um, the board usually goes back to, you know, two meetings a month, and then, you know, if you wanna cancel one, need to cancel one, whatever, that, you know, that's not an issue. So, the, so the two dates in September, if, you know, sticking, if you wanna continue to go with the first and the third Tuesdays, are the third and the seventeenth. I know school, I believe the public schools are in session the week before that. Um, the third is on, is the Tuesday after Labor Day. I don't know if that affects people or not, um, but I wanted to let you know that, that already on the seventeenth, I've tentatively, uh, su- you know, based on what your decision will be denied about when you wanna meet, um, is that I've tentatively have, um, a staff member from the Regional Planning Commission coming to our meeting on the seventeenth to talk in detail about solar and-
Oh, great.
-and hopefully hazard waste, but I'll, I'll, you know, I'll get to that when we get there. But, so that's, so right now, I, I have something booked for you on the seventeenth. And if that doesn't work to you, I mean, that's fine, we'll, we'll work around that, but-
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if we, so I would like us to be able to discuss land use and housing. It would be beneficial, I think, to have Michelle join us, especially for housing. Um, obviously, both Anthony and Michelle, but housing specifically for her.
Did that on the third?
So, if we looked at that on the third, if it's okay with you, unless you guys have a-
Right, is there any way, instead of the Tuesday after Labor Day, we could bump it to the fifth? I mean, can anyone do that Thursday instead? I hate to move it. My son's moving into college, and I doubt I'll make it back in time.
Okay, so that-
I don't know.
I can do that, but either way, whenever that first meeting is, the third or fifth.
I would like to meet that week, though.
Can we, if we cover land use and housing at that time, so we can just go through that a little bit?
Can you meet on the fifth, Cathy?
Yeah, the fifth, yep, and there's, there's not, um, it's not a heavy meeting night here, so, I, we'll have a room. I, I just don't know which room.
Okay. I just don't wanna make it too-
I can send out, you know, an email tomorrow, um, to Anthony and Michelle, um, to see if they're available on the fifth.
Okay. All right, so, um, then, in terms of any public comments regarding what we ta- talked about or anything, and, and we got some great comments last time, and I still have all of those, um, from our last meeting. But any, would anyone like to say anything up from the public? Lisa?
Well, I just left the white list, I mean, in due, and in hearing what you were saying, Amy, one of the things that came from that, and was that, um, you've got a part of this historical preservation program in the bottom of the line here, um, which should be, you know, white list, because from, um, from the motion, and the Article forty-two that was done in two thousand sixteen, it specifically says, purchase of, purchase of property for store preservation purposes, and that related thereto improving maintenance protection. Um, what, what, there's nothing about reuse or municipal use in this article. And we keep talking about reuse of this building for municipal purposes, or perhaps breaking up the land, selling the land. The fact is that the land of the six acres with the building could be utilized for a number of different things. And one of it could help with economic development, and that's true, but you should be able to do something with this building that would bring people in, not make it into offices, not make it into condos, not make it into a developer's dream to come in and perhaps put a light in it in the world. So, I think it needs to be changed, and at very least, take it out of the examples for repurposing town buildings, because it hasn't been put in that way. When it's time to do that, you have to go to town meeting and say, "All right, you wanna change your charge." Because there's nothing in any of the records that I have found that they did go to town meeting to change their charge. So, I think you run down a slippery slope by putting it in under reuse committee or under reuse town buildings, when in fact, it's supposed to be one of the things that we keep as a store preservation.
Okay. I hope to figure out what exact goal it is. Do you guys know? Do you know which? I'm trying to figure out which one it falls under. I see NCH three. It talks about long-term planning goals for white cliffs, under repurpose. So, facilities for community needs.
I saw it. So, I think it's two, at least two in front of that, where it says, "This is your preservation purposes." And that land, it's not going to be from the, and then-
Protection of resources.
... expand historical tax incentives, and then-
NCH three.
Yeah.
Repurpose surplus townhouse buildings, NCH three dash one.
Yeah. So, repurpose surplus town buildings. So, you think that white cliff should be taken out of that as an example of repurpose?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And you put in restored preservation program.
I think it's not, it's not specified, yeah.
Is that, that, again, it's, it's a resource that we have that should be-
Antique properties.
-utilized for economic development and not for developers' development.
Okay.
And, and then, I'm not sure if this is the, this is the area to talk about, cause we talked about historical things and that sort of thing, but, um, what we're gonna be doing in, in sidewalks and tree planting and traffic calming, and where is that going to come in? Is that a, a different, different time to discuss that, or is that something that's going to happen?
I think that's under land use, as in enhanced downtown, and there's trees talked about.
So, that would be better to bring up if there was any-
Unless you have something quick you wanted to point out about it, or?
Well, I, I mean, I think that the sidewalks, the sidewalks is, is a very important, uh, thing for me, obviously. Um, there's a lot to the sidewalks, and the safety, and in fact, it's a, you know, a public way that people should be, should feel safe on. And, um, and we have, uh, under the municipal code, already in the general legislation, Chapter two forty-four, um, oh, no, no, it says vehicles on sidewalks and crosswalks, so that's authorized by law, um, shall not park on any sidewalk, nor park on any crosswalk or intersection. And I think, um, it's also a state law. I, I looked that up. And we park on it all the time. We park on, we break down the few currents that we do have, cause none of our curbs are very good. And, um, and I think it's, as a walker, and somebody walks a dog, or rides bikes, you need to clear this street. I think it's quite a social, um, I, you know, Maple Street, and people pass me going into my white light, which I almost got keeled about five months ago, and you're kidding me. It's a good thing I'm looking in the rearview mirror before I take a turn. I had to put a direction on it along my driveway. But, even with that on, I still have this young man passing me. And I know that there's some other people who've had that experience. And traffic calming is gonna be, I hope, part of that land where, um, there's different things that come into play with traffic calming, whether it's, I mean, it's, it's a little bit of roads, um, speeding bumps, speeding, you know, greets, or whatever they're called. But there's something that has to be done, because traffic's going by, the speeding is, is picking up in the hot rods, and the way everybody perceives the roads, almost as if. The joy is where it's fast as we can go. Um, and you hear a couple of hot rods actually racing down Route twenty. That was a month ago, you could hear it, you know, through the whole town, ten o'clock at night, and they're drag racing on Route twenty. Really, I mean, I mean, that looks like that they, that the driver thinks that there's really no recourse, and they can do whatever they want to. I don't know why we got to that stage, but it's there. I mean, the hot rods and the loud mufflers and everything else have now gone into a whole different, um, an attitude. So, so the sidewalks are important. I mean, you really have to be able to, a lot of people wanna walk their kids to school, they've got the baby carriages, the kids are riding bikes, um, you need, you need to protect them, and, and we need to start getting some contiguous sidewalks. If you're going to do walkers, you can have the sidewalks that we have at, um, Hillside, where you, you'd have to climb up the hill, and then climb back down onto the grass to find a way back to downtown. I mean, if somebody's gonna put a building in, they should have contiguous sidewalks that are next to the street. And, I mean, I don't know if that goes into design review, or, or how that's handled, that that needs to be a bylaw, but, you know, I think there's enough people that notice that, you just put a sidewalk in, it should be pretty much seventy feet from the street, and not-
I think that echoes some of what we heard last time about sidewalks, um, just having consistency in crosswalks. I think Michelle talked a little bit about sidewalks and trucking and all of that, so I think it's valuable feedback, so, thank you for that.
Yeah, and we have, um, under the master plan, there's a transportation section last, and it talks about calming, traffic calming measures in compliance with federal and state laws and regulations. So, that's actually an action item. So that's actually an action item. Yeah.
And then, well, probably about the trees, I mean, we already have in our bylaws, or in the, um, municipal code, about replanting the trees, where everything is cut down and you can't see the trees. And I don't know that, I don't think there's replanted a tree, so let's just be careful. If I can get a, you know, list of how many trees have been replanted. Um, and I noticed this program is out there that they'll do the trees. So it's not always that we can't afford them, but that, I think it'd be time to put aside to, uh, to, to, because, especially now, these trees have two different reasons, they're finally taken down, and it's wide open, and the sun's beating down on it, and, 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 yes, it's a whole different feeling that when everything is wide open, um, you're not, you're not helping to bring back a lot of the, you know, natural, um, earth and the ozone layer and all that stuff.
I don't think that was covered in-
No, it is, there is a goal, though.
Okay.
Under, develop, LU two dash five is develop a program to promote the planting and same growth of street trees, landscaping and other green infrastructure.
Okay, so good, that's on the redoc.
Yeah, but it just says downtown, so we could add more than downtown. And I think it is important for us to know, too, when we do applications, because, because we have a couple, um, developments recently downtown where the trees all came down, and now that it's bare, I know he said they're going to plant a couple pear trees, but now I wish I was firmer on, you know, maybe an Elmer or maple would help with the streetscape going downtown.
Yeah, to have just guidelines on that, because how would we know?
Right.
That's good feedback, thank you, Lisa. Henry, you have something?
During the discussion on the purchase of the white cliffs, I thought it was said that after a certain number of years, if, if we couldn't decide what to do with it, we could sell that land. I remember that during the discussion, on whether it's in, or we passed, or not, but I, that question came up. And I thought the answer was after a certain number of years, if we didn't come up with what we could do with that property, we wouldn't hold on to it forever.
I don't have an answer to that.
I don't-
Kathy, do you know?
There wasn't, um, there wasn't a specific number of years, Henry, but there, part of the discussion was, um, you know, for, for first, the town to acquire it, the town to protect as much as they can of the existing building, and then, how do we look at reusing that property? Do, do we as a community reuse it, you know, for, for municipal use? Do we as a community reuse it by leasing it out to the private sector? And, and they, you know, the town still owns it, but the private sector, um, is operating and running it? Um, or do we, um, sell the, the property? So, um, and then there's a historic preservation restriction that will be placed on the property. So, and that's, that's a given, it has to happen, a historic preservation restriction. So no matter what the property is used for, or whoever uses the property, whoever ends up being the ultimate owner, which may in fact be the town, or it might be the private sector, um, it, that preservation restriction, you know, remains in place.
I think a lot of people forget about that portion of it.
That, right, that it could become private property.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Henry?
No.
That's it, okay. Anyone else? Julian.
Julian Herschel speaking as a private resident. Um, so in, perhaps this is covered, but was there any attention made to eco-friendly buildings, um, clean energy use as we talk about development? When I was at listening sessions, green was a big topic.
There originally was something, but we have, have green communities, and I think they're under obligations now when they build new, that they have to follow certain rules.
Right, right.
So I think it came out of the master plan, because now it has to be done anyways. And actually, I read the industrial development guidelines, too, and there's a lot about green practices there that I, I think we should all read, because I, I didn't know we had industrial development, um, design guidelines, and they were very interesting. They talked about green roofs, it talked about a lot of new things.
Did you hear of any programs of interest, aside from ones you mentioned, or that you caught your eye, or?
Well, so, um, you know, for example, some towns are putting in car chargers-
Oh, yeah, we talked about those, yeah.
Solar energy, that sort of thing. But that is an attraction to people, and, and it's educational.
We did talk about that under transportation last time, about car charging and-
Uh-huh.
So I think there are, and plus with the green communities, there's an effort, you've decided certain funding to go towards. Wasn't a car charger in one of them?
Yeah, yeah, and then in, in general, um, Julian, one of the things the planning board, and we're just going to touch on it tonight, but at, um, one of our September meetings, that, or one of the board's September meetings, um, we're going to, um, be working on a solar bylaw, for a large-scale solar bylaw for town meeting. Um, for, you know, talking about town meeting already, um, for twenty twenty. So, um, so that's one of the, the bylaws that the planning board wants to bring forward.
Great.
But to bring forward, too, because if this were, if this is supposed to stand the test of time, you don't, you almost can't imagine in twenty years what you'll need to have in place in terms of that type of component, so.
I was going to say car chargers. I was reading about doing a master plan, though, we can do amendments, like, you don't have to wait twenty years. Like, if technology changes, the planning board can, you know, make amendments and changes and update. We don't have to go back and do a whole master plan. We could work with Central Mass Planning, or we could do it on our own.
Any other comment? Henry, do you have something else?
T four dash two, we do talk about charging stations.
Oh, okay.
I, I see the line on the video.
Thank you. What number was that, did you say?
T four dash two.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments? No? Okay, great, uh, thanks for, that's a lot of great feedback. I'll have it combined with, uh, last month's feedback as well, so thank you, I appreciate that.
So Carrie, we'll look at September fifth, continuing the discussion on September fifth.
Yeah, so we'll-
If that works with Michelle and Anthony.
Yep, so we'll have, um, land use and then housing. Um, oh, and then just in terms of schedule in general, so then we have, um, on the twelfth is when the steering committee comes back together.
Yep, the steering committee is, um, meeting at the library on, on September twelfth. And then, um, we may or may not have another steering committee meeting, we're not sure at this point.
Okay.
But then after that, as far as the planning board, the, um, the, the final meeting that we have scheduled as far as the, the, the master plan process, um, is right now, um, October twenty-first will be the night that we do the presentation, the master plan steering committee, and the consultant will do the presentation to the planning board, to the Board of Selectmen. I mean, everyone will, you know, everyone will be invited, but, um, that's the, the date that, that we've arrived at with the consultants.
Okay, and so that's a separate meeting, it's not within the flow of a currently held meeting, it's just like a separate meeting that month?
The selectmen are meeting that night, but, but we'll do that, you know, I, I'm hoping first, you know, that, that we'll have the master plan presentation, you know, at seven o'clock. Um, and then, you know, the rest of the selectmen's meeting will, will, will go on.
Okay, so then, oh, go ahead.
I'm concerned, because the, um, the master plan falls under the planning board, so shouldn't it be a planning board meeting that holds it? Like, now we're going to go back to the selectmen, and they'll be running the meeting, and I feel like this is under the planning board purview, so it should be-
I mean, we, well, the, the master plan steering committee talked about this from the beginning, that, that, that there would be a joint meeting, um, with the Board of Selectmen and the planning board. So that's, I mean, that's in our contract.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and so the, the date that, that I've, you know-
Are you suggesting just do it on the planning board meeting?
Yeah, I know, I mean, we said a joint meeting, but we never said it was going to be held by the selectmen. I would say, since it, it's under the purview of the planning board, it should be a joint meeting held by the planning board.
But I mean, it's a joint meeting, so what?
Well, we saw the problem with the minutes, like, the minutes fell under the selectmen, they approved them, we couldn't make changes. Not that I want to make changes to the minutes, but I just feel like if it was a meeting about the budget for next year's town meeting, we're not going to say, oh, let's hold it at the planning board's meeting. Like, this falls under the purview of the planning board, and why are the meetings taking place under the selectmen? I feel like we could call the meeting as the planning board. On a Tuesday? Um, yeah, on a Tuesday, or? Yeah.
I mean, I-
It's just-
I mean, again, I mean, the selectmen are the governing body for the, for the town of Northborough.
But not really the master plan, that's really our purview.
Well, it's, but, but everyone participates in the master plan, you know?
Okay, well, either way, then what I would suggest is, if we have that joint presentation, if we have it whatever night that works, then why don't we have, in the following time that we meet, well, at some point the planning board will have to adopt it, so why don't we do the, at the following meeting, that we would actually have a separate meeting, that we, we work to adopt it, or-
Yeah.
Have some sort of, like, uh, actually, what I did notice, too, is that, um, one of the regionals, the Western region, set up, they actually do a public hearing. It's something that, um, they didn't have, you don't have to hold a public hearing, but that it was strongly encouraged to have a public hearing as you're voting on the master plan, sort of like we do here, to give people a chance to talk about the different components and have, get to state whatever opinions they have. I mean, I feel like we have the surveys, but I wouldn't mind hearing, what, public, if the public wants to weigh in, like, in a hearing-type format. So, if we could, we just hold a public hearing?
If that's what you wanted to do, um, like you said, it's not necessary, Carrie, but, um, the, the schedule, again, if you're, if you're going with the first and the third in October, it would be the first and the fifteenth. Um, you can sue it, let me just check. You, there's five Tuesdays in October, so if you wanted to, um, I mean, it's entirely up to the board, but, you know, if you wanted to meet on the, it, instead of the, I don't know, the fifteenth, you, maybe you meet the eighth and the twenty-ninth? Um, you know, to kind of split up the, the month a little evenly in October.
So we'd have the planning board hearing first, and then the public presentation?
No, there'd be the, the public presentation on the twenty-first.
Mm-hmm.
And then the, then I'm suggesting that then you could meet again if you wanted to on the twenty-ninth.
Oh, okay, I thought you said October eighth.
I mean, you could meet on the twenty-second, I, it, it's, you know, whatever, whatever works with your schedules.
Is the twenty-second our normal night?
No, the first and the fifteenth are.
No.
There's five Mondays in October.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we, when we have, um, a full board, why don't we review the schedule, so next meeting, and let's talk about, um, the joint presentation component. So we'll figure out the joint presentation, public hearing, and, um, planning board adoption on the fifth, when we have Michelle and Anthony back as well, and we'll get a full consensus on what the board wants to take for action. Is that, is that-
Yep.
That's right. And that way it's, we have, I realize we-
Yeah, it's three of us.
Had to-
That's right.
Not have their input as well, so.
Yep.
Okay, um, let's see, anything else on that? All right, any A and R?
No, not to me, sorry, I didn't know that you were to me, you're not-
Oh, no. Okay, any A and Rs?
Uh, no.
Okay, lot releases?
No.
Bonds?
Yep, I, just a quick update on the Newton Street bond. Um, the, um, it's not, it, I don't, it's not a complete update, but, um, we'll know more in the next two weeks. The, uh, DPW director and the town engineer met with the developer and the, the developer's contractor this afternoon out on Newton Street.
Oh.
And so the, um, the developer is, uh, you know, is indicating he's very, um, um, very willing to do the work, and, um, it was stressed to him that we really, the, the town wants to have the work done before school opens. And, um, his contractor believes that he'll be able to do it within the next two weeks, but it's going to take him a couple days to work up a price proposal for the, you know, for his client. And, um, and then the, the DPW, um, will meet again and to determine if, you know, that's, that's going to work. So right now, the indication is, is that the applicant is going to be able to, um, complete the, the roadwork um, by the end of August. So at this time, there's no further action for you to take tonight. And then we'll have, you know, something definitive, um, before your next meeting.
Okay, so we, what, what's on the table is whether or not we can call the bond.
Mm-hmm.
And based on the meeting today, it doesn't look like that would be a wise course of action.
Right, right, that, yeah, the, um, our, our attorney and the developer's attorney have, you know, had, um, you know, several communications, you know, between the last meeting and, and today, and, and through that, it was arranged for the meeting to happen out on, on the site.
Okay.
So, and it was very positive.
Any comments on this?
Sounds good.
At all? Okay. All right, well, that's a relief. Any, any, um, input from residents, any additional? I know they, um, put together a, uh, sheet that a lot of them signed. Have, have they said anything, or any comments that have come into the sound?
No.
Okay. All right, so that's good. Do you have that sheet? Does it have sign?
Yeah, sure.
I can send that to Millie, if you want a copy of that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great.
Resident has sent in.
Yep.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, so good, I guess, that's a good update, then. Um, subcommittee updates, let's see, Open Space, did you actually attend this last?
I did attend the last one.
Anything from Open Space?
Um, Open Space is starting their Open Space Plan. They're doing like a master plan for Open Space, it has to be done, I think, every ten years. So, and you need that to get grants. So they're starting that, using a lot of data from the master plan, and CMR PC, too, is helping.
The, the kickoff, yeah, Central Mass is, is our consultant on the, this project. Um, and the, um, the kickoff meeting for the Open Space were required to, um, uh, I mean, we're, we would do it anyways, but I mean, we have to, you know, officially send out notices. Um, it's not a public hearing, but, you know, it's called a kickoff meeting, and that will be held on, uh, Oct-, uh, excuse me, September thirtieth. And, um, you'll all be getting an email within the next week or so, um, you know, if you wanted to attend that or not. Um, but, um, primarily, it's a, it's a meeting of the, um, Open Space Committee, the Conservation Commission, and, uh, Recreation Committee, or Recreation Commission. Those are the, um, three boards that are involved with the math, oh, excuse me, with the Open Space Plan. And then we have, obviously, a very active trails committee, and they're a part of the process, too. So, um, but, you know, other boards will be invited, too, including yourselves, but that's, um, uh, September, uh, thirtieth.
Right.
Which is a Monday evening, and that'll be seven o'clock downstairs.
That was really it, we talked about a property, and then it sold, probably three days after we were talking about it, so, um, yeah.
Where was that?
Um, it was over by the middle school.
Oh, well, we're not, it, not entirely, well, I guess it's, it's like in a couple of days or something, the closing's supposed to happen.
Okay.
So, so I, I wouldn't officially-
Rule it out?
Yeah, well, you know, you never know.
Yeah, yeah.
Never know what can happen at a closing.
And the owners might want to work with the Open Space, because there were other residents there that were excited about working with Open Space in keeping a lot of Open Space back there, because it, if they, um, if some of the neighbors went along with it, it could link up to Carney Park, and, so, it was exciting, and we'll see what happens.
Okay. Uh, anything else in there?
No, that was it.
Community Preservation Committee, no meetings?
Haven't met yet.
Okay. But they know you're on the committee to contact you and invite you?
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah.
Okay, Design Review is Michelle's, she's not here, have they met again?
Uh, no, no.
Uh, Groundwater is you?
We haven't met either.
Okay. All right, and then, um, for me, CMR PC, there were a couple things. The last meeting that I went to, they, um, there was a discussion about, um, possibly developing a regional housing plan, so I thought that was really interesting, because one thing that we saw at, um, one of the conferences early in the year was that the Metropolitan Area Planning Council has mass builds, so it's, it's a tool to kind of look and see all the projects going on in the area, and they also have this, um, Data Town and Housing Toolbox dot org, and you can look in and see what's going on, and what the data is for your town, and, um, no, this actually includes all the towns in Massachusetts, but, um, they were just really interesting to look at, if you-
There you go.
Um, and in terms of the, this region having its own plan, um, there was talk about whether or not they wanted to take that on as an initiative, and right now it's just in the early phases of just actually getting consensus that that would be a good idea, and then next would be kind of a proposal of what that looks like, and timelines and all of that. But, um, it's exciting, and if you go on these websites, it's really neat. Kathy, I'm sure you've been into all of them, and that you can really get into a, you know, down-
You can get lost.
You can get lost.
Get lost in all the data.
Lost in a good way, I love data, but it's, yeah.
So for anyone who loves that stuff or anyone at home that wants to look, it's, um, it's really neat stuff to look at. Um, the other thing was, um, Kathy, you were on vacation, so I don't know if you got this letter as well, but, um, there was a letter about, uh, local planning assistance. Did you receive this letter? Okay, so, um, one thing that they talked about is that we have, um, local planning assistance hours. And we start off our year with twelve hours, and then, um, every time we attend something, we get additional hours, um, up to twenty-four hours. So I don't know if Julie, is Julian the delegate from board of selectmen this year?
I, I, that, I don't know, um, but, but you.
So last year.
So it's good, that, that's a relatively new, I'm sorry, Carrie, I didn't, but that, getting, getting, um, the, the extra hours or the brownie points for going to, um, to the MRPC meetings, um, really does help us out, I mean, not only you individually, but we end up with these extra planning hours.
So, yep, so last year, um, Julian was the delegate from the board of selectmen, and I was the delegate for planning board, and we went to, I think we went to all of them, really. So we were able to accumulate some time there, um, and the way that they can be used, we can use them for GIS mapping services, data requests, to offset personnel costs for larger planning projects, request for planning staff to provide expertise, um, to request assistance with the, a development of a grant application, request for planning staff to prepare for, attend and, and provide planning services at a meeting, not specifically related to an ongoing project. Um, the things that you can put it towards are like goods and services, which is pretty obvious, um, and any non-CMR PC staff planning assistants. So, um, they walked through the whole process, and they went, they really stressed that, um, CMR PC is a regional planning agency, and to be, they said to be, to be consistent going forward, that they are vesting the authority to allocate the hour, the LPA hours of the planning board. So what they gave me was this, um, authorization of how to allocate the use and, um, we, through, the planning board through its chair, it indicates who's eligible to allocate LPA hours. So that's something that they, um, I think it's been a process that hasn't been clearly implemented, and now they wanted to do that. So I just wanted to talk about, well, first I wanted to hear from you, Kathy, how we typically delegate them and.
Yep, the, um, in that particular incident, that also goes to the town administrator.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a, and the board of selectmen, because they're involved also in the regional planning commission, uh, obviously, as you know, as a designee. And so the town administrator, um, sent back to the, um, which is, I think by email, um, that as far, for the community, it's, it would be myself, it's the, as the town planner, and that's, that's how we've kind of always done it in the past too. Um, but in the, so in, in some years, we use the hours, some years we don't. Um, this particular year, um, we're going to be using some as part of the open space plan, um, so some of the hours will be allocated there. Um, last year or the year before, they had done some work with us on the right to farm bylaw.
Oh, nice.
Um, in talking with, uh, you know, the, um, Central Mass staff since our last planning board meeting, um, the, most likely the solar bylaw will be able to come under local planning, um, hours. We're not sure about hazardous waste, we might have to have a contract with them, because it's, it's something brand new to them, they, they haven't worked in that area before or on those bylaws, so that might not come under the local planning. But basically, how the local planning hours work is if the, the communities are able to, you know, access them. And, um, and it's, as far as how Central Mass works, it's, it's not, um, when they have to pull staff off of an existing project or, or sort of the normal course of their day, um, then a contract is needed. But other than that, like the, you know, they're all very familiar with solar bylaw, they, they have, you know, two or three staff members that work. I'm just using that as the most recent example. Um, so they would cover something like that under the local, you know, planning hours, and that's, that's what they would suggest to the community. This is where you should use your, you know, your hours, you know, this is something we'll do as staff.
So then, for the remainder of the year, um, I think all of that should come through the planning board? I don't know how the rest of the board feels, if that is something that, if, if we want to allocate this, that we think about what's going on in the town, and then we hear like, well, this makes sense, this is what we're working on, this, we need X number here.
Submit it to them or just keep it?
Well, then we can say, that's, you know, that makes sense, or that, that's how we want it allocated, that's how we don't want it allocated.
Yeah.
So that seems to be the message that I got.
Yeah, and the, and the board of selectmen too, Carrie, because they have a delegate.
Well, this is what they, no, they actually are changing it now, so they're saying that, um, that was, it was all willy-nilly, so going forward, they're vesting the authority, um, to the planning board, and they, it's, the, because it's a regional planning agency, that's their purpose to do so. And they're very firm about that, there was a long discussion about how that has kind of been off kilter in certain towns, and that, um, that's, that's really the way that it should work. It's a planning type agency, so any comments on that or?
Well, I just had a question, those hours, are those ones that are used for classes, if you called in a class too, like we had talked about? You know, say we wanted, we go to those classes.
I don't know if CPTC, um.
Oh, it's different, okay, I was thinking.
Yeah, because that's not the regional planning commission, that's the citizen planning, training, citizen training, citizen planner training collaborative. That's not Central Mass, Central Mass is involved in it, but it's, that's, um, comes from a collaboration of, uh, DHCD, UMass, um, the, uh, regional planning commission, the, um, uh, Audubon, and I think there's a fifth, um, uh, organization. So that's, that's not specifically Central Mass, so where the local planning hours are, if you attend, like there, right now, the Central Mass is looking at, um, uh, holding a solar workshop, um, because they've gotten a lot of questions from various communities, so they're looking at holding a solar workshop in probably October. So if, um, you know, anyone attended that, you get, you know, uh, you know, the town gets credit for that.
So anyone of the planning board can attend?
Yep, yep, yeah, and as those, as those training opportunities come up, Millie, they, they get sent to you.
Yeah, okay.
And, um, so, so they, they do, um, you know, they try to hold, like, training sessions, you know, maybe two or three times a year. Then they also have meetings, they have quarterly meetings, um, they, you know, so there's, there's a lot of opportunity to get extra hours.
How far in advance are they, um, sending that out, because I, I haven't, I didn't get anything yet, so I didn't know.
No, they have, they haven't even come up with a date for October yet.
Okay.
So they're working on that in-house, and they should know like within the next week or so, and then they'll send a notice out to all the communities.
Mm-hmm. So with our twelve to twenty-four hours, you said some years we use them, some years we don't, they don't carry over, right? If you don't use them, you lose them, so we should try to use them. I'm sure, we always have something.
But, but, uh, uh, could we figure out what's already, like, what, what we already have for ideas of how we want to use them, so then we know what's remaining and if we want to use them in other ways?
Yeah, let me, I'll figure out with Trish how many we've already allocated to, uh, of that F Y twenty for their, um, open space plan. And, um, so, um, I'll figure out how many we, we already have allocated to that.
All right, and I plan to attend whatever's available, so hopefully we'll continue to accumulate that.
And when, does it go year to year, is it fiscal year, end of December to reset?
No, our fiscal, the municipal fiscal year is July first.
Okay.
Starts July first.
So that's when it resets then, okay.
And we pay every community that is part of the, uh, I mean, every community in Massachusetts belongs to a regional planning commission.
Mm-hmm.
And we pay, uh, 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 money every year to the regional planning commission. So it's based on population, so, you know, it's different for every community.
Right, for every different size.
Yeah, that's all, that's all part of how the process works.
It's our impact fee.
Uh, so that's it for CMR PC, and then, um, so prep for twenty twenty town meeting, we have the, starting with solar and, well, solar and hazardous waste, either way. So so, let's start with solar, I guess.
So the, as far as the solar, the, uh, since the last meeting, I've been in touch with our, um, staff contact, Kelly Brown, who has been to this planning board meeting, a couple, uh, planning board, um, meetings a couple of times when we were going through the green community process. And, um, so I just double-checked with Kelly to see if she had any additional information other than what I sent you, and, um, she, she doesn't, that's, that's the information that is available from the state. And so, um, I had originally sent you links, I can send if, and I think I also gave everyone hard copies at the last meeting. So there's three or four documents, um, one of them is a model bylaw, you know, that, that communities can, can look at. Central Mass Regional Planning Commission is very familiar with that, I've contacted them about, um, assisting us with our bylaw development. Um, they have, you know, staff members that specifically work on green communities, on solar bylaws, on, um, you know, o- other sustainability, um, you know, um, com- components of, of bylaws. So they are, um, willing to come to your, and that's what I said, I tentatively scheduled them for, um, September seventeenth, um, where one of the staff members, there might be two staff members, but there, there's one so far, um, and, uh, to come and kind of just give us an overview of where the solar industry and the solar bylaws are now, and, um, what we should be, you know, specifically looking at, um, to put into our bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's, uh, so that's, that's in the works. Um, and then, um, I've also asked them for assistance with the hazardous waste facilities bylaw, and, um, like I said, it just, uh, it's sort of at the, towards the beginning of the meeting, um, that is something that's brand new for them, um, it's, uh, they're going to be in touch with, there's an engi- an engineering firm that they work with, um, uh, on very technical issues, and so they're going to talk to them about, um, you know, work that they may have done on, on this. Um, there, there are not a lot of communities that have this kind of bylaw, so there's not a lot of examples out there. And, um, then myself and Central Mass, we're going to be in touch with DEP, and it's all under a state, you know, bylaw, uh, excuse me, a state statute, um, which is primarily set up for the DEP, which is the Department of Environmental Protection, and boards of health. And so, um, we're, you know, we, we still have to, um, do some, um, you know, very basic research here, you know, to, to, to bring us up to speed so that we can then talk to you about what should we be in the bylaw.
I just wanted, you know, Hudson and Shrewsbury, like I said, do have them, and even when Fred gave his example, Shrewsbury did it because someone wanted to come in and start, um, starting hazardous soils, like, I just don't want to leave ourselves open to that, because I'll say, okay, Shrewsbury's got it, let's go to Northboro, they don't have anything, and we already have a couple of those in town, so I just want to protect us.
Yep, the, um, some of my initial research, just, just so that you know, that this is not something that, you know, is, um, is, is common. There, in, in the state, there are only, um, there's only eleven, actually, and it's now ten, because one, one was in Northboro and it's come off, there's only ten hazardous waste facilities in the state of Massachusetts. So, so just, you know, in, in case this is keeping you up at night, you know, it's not something that, you know, people are knocking down the doors for.
Right.
Um, so there isn't a lot of information, uh, you know, as far as local information. Um, so that's why I just don't have, you know, anything to hand you tonight, certainly not a draft, but even just some, you know, background information on it. So I mean, we have the state statute, and then we're going to start, um, to see if, if, you know, we can get some additional information out of DEP and, um, and maybe other, uh, uh, sample bylaws that, that they've worked with.
I think it'd be great to have, because you never know what the future is going to bring too, with all the, you know, recycling sounds green, but there's a lot of recycling of other non-green things, and I don't, I just think it'd be great to be protected.
Well, that sounds great for having those resources, thanks for inviting them in. Any comments from you, Millie?
I'm, nope.
Okay.
Pretty clear on that.
Um, so draft board appointment policy.
So what you have, again, you, you had them by email, you pressed to see in this, but you had them by email, and then, um, I made copies again tonight. Um, so there's, um, there's two versions, but I mean, they're not wildly different. There's, is the, um, version that, um, I had originally prepared, um, last year, which was taking the board of selectmen's, um, appointment policy and, um, you know, taking out, you know, information that doesn't pertain to the planning board, and then also, uh, you know, replacing selectmen with planning board. And then the, um, second document that you have, which has, uh, some comments and questions, um, that's what Carrie had looked at last year. So those are the two versions that you have in front of you.
Okay, and so the, also for the opening that we do have, so you mentioned the last time that was advertised?
Um, for the.
Design review?
Yes.
So is that on the website, someone had reached out and said that they couldn't find how to apply?
Um, it, it's supposed to be on the website.
Okay.
Went and looked, I didn't find it either.
Um, there is a, um, uh, there's a list of all, um, vacancies, and, uh, and it should be on there.
Okay.
I don't think it was.
No, okay, all right, well, I'll double-check, I, I don't put those up, so.
Yeah, we could have just gone.
It looks like there's a new system there too, is there a new system?
I don't, I don't.
Oh, yeah, when I clicked on it, it was a new system, I can't remember it now, but.
Okay, so either way, it sounds like nobody's applied anyway, so we don't have to rush for, I mean, we should have this in place, but there's not like we have a whole slew of people, though hopefully we will, um, and then we'd have to figure out too, this didn't cover rotation, because I guess that's something a little different for the design review committee, um, just figuring out how we're going to rotate that board for, that to, to match the pass, the bylaw that passed. What is the best approach, or, board members, you have any thoughts on, um, rotation?
The, um, I, do you mean like when a, when someone leaves midterm?
Well, no, because now we have a fully populated board except for one, so if we tier them by three years, who goes first? Is it whoever the longest, shortest, does the chair consider?
Well, the, the way town council had explained it to me prior to town meeting, in, in case that, you know, question had come up at town meeting, was that, um, you know, you, you would start with the, you know, the person, you know, you don't, you don't go backwards. So it would be any new appointment that comes onto the board would be, you know, now subject to the new policy.
Well, that would be silly, because then only one person would have, it would just, it wouldn't solve our problem. We, our, our reason for it was to provide an opportunity to evaluate people at, at three-year intervals, so I would still like to, whether it's, if they all started three years now, is, I guess, fine, but seems silly as well, that we would want some sort of, like, rotation to it. I mean, it's our board that we appoint, so we can probably do whatever we want.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I don't know that you can do it however you want.
Well, the bylaw laws are three-year terms.
Yeah, I mean, the, you, you, like I said, when I checked with town council, that was, that was their opinion, is that going forward, you know, as board members are replaced, you know, they're now subject to the, to the term limit that you put in place.
Um, so I'd like to further investigate that, because I think it defeats the purpose of it, and also, even the chair itself is rotating every three years. So Michelle, should she not go for reelection, like, we would have a board in perpetuity, and, except for our own representative, and then one person that we add. I just don't think it makes sense that it defeats the purpose, the, the purpose of that bylaw was to provide three-year intervals where we could evaluate people. So, um, I don't know how we further review that, but I don't think that suits what our intention was. I don't know, do you have any comments, Amy or Millie?
No, I think there have to be term limits, I mean, I don't think, just to do an interview process and a review, I don't, you know, saying that I'm going to replace anyone, but. So what you're saying is that whoever's on there now is on there forever, if they choose to be?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's how the board was originally set up, and, and town council's response was, you know, when we were going through this and how, you know, and they reported this a little bit when, when we were going through.
Well, I think we talked about, um, a rotation plan, the town council would advise us on the rotation plan. Not that there is no rotation plan, I don't think.
Right, so when I asked them what, how, how would this would, how this bylaw would be enacted, that's, that's their answer.
Okay, so I think we need to review that further, uh, let me look at the bylaw.
It's not in the, it's not in the book, Carrie, it's the separate sheets.
Oh, it's not in this book yet?
No, no, that's. No, no, that's last year's book, but we haven't gotten back the acceptance from the Attorney General yet. So it's just the separate sheets that, um...
I do think, I mean, I have to go back and read our minutes. I think there's even minutes where we're talking about the rotation.
Yeah, we definitely did, so is the intent?
Oh, there's no question that you definitely did.
So I don't think that just saying there's no plan is a plan. So I think we need to somehow revisit this, or reword it, or revisit the bylaw if necessary. But I think the heart of it is to do three-year intervals, not just a group of five serve until the end of time. I actually have this.
I even think I noticed now with open space, people are coming up with end dates that I don't think were there before. When I was on open space, everybody seemed to kind of be on there forever.
Nope, that wasn't.
That wasn't?
Nope.
Oh.
Okay, well, why don't, when we come back, when we have Michelle as a chair of the board, she'll be back next month, so why don't we, why don't we first look at the appointments in general?
Do you want me to get clarification from Town Council?
Yeah, so I think our intent was to have a rotation plan. I'm certain that we talked about that as part of the whole package, that we wanted some sort of rotation plan, and that Town Council would help us figure out who goes first. I, it was never my understanding.
Right, and even at one of the classes I met with the Town Council, and they say, and I didn't ask about the rotation, but they said it's all on how you ask the question, like, if we, if you say you want rotation, they'll write it in. And if you say, oh, we want to keep our board forever, they'll come back and say, well, this is how you do that, like,
You can frame it up.
Right, you can frame it the way you want it, like, if you,
We were proposing.
So I think they're gonna say whatever we wa- whatever the town wants.
So how do we make a rotation work? Based in the confines of the bylaw that we've written, how do we make a rotation work? I guess would be what I'd wanna know.
Right.
Would you also wanna know?
Yeah, how to incorporate that into not just the new people, but everybody who's currently on the boards.
Right.
Okay. Okay, any comments on the policy piece of it?
So the appointments to boards and committees, where, um, under the planning board, it's design review, earthworks, financial planning, is that what this is covering?
Yep, that's all you have.
Okay. So if you guys are still thinking, I'll just go first, because I went through and made some comments. I thought that this was a, I thought the policy, um, that the Board of Selectmen started was a, a nice way to start, so I didn't have a ton of things that were different, other than, um, a couple notes, like, I thought the period of six months was too short for keeping something on file, so I suggested maybe, I just put, oh, I put twelve, like, wondering maybe we wanna do twelve. The other area that I thought, um, may not work as well for us, especially since we don't have as many appointments, is doing an interview subcommittee, so I feel like, um, you know, having the board there, not delegating it to a smaller group, just because we don't really have that many anyway, so I, I don't know if it makes as much sense for our group as it does for the Board of Selectmen. And then the only other thing, you know, I made it, let's see. Oh, just whether or not we deliberated that night was my other comment. The, just, the, in the original, the interview subcommittee had discretion as whether or not they make the appointment at the same meeting or defer to the next meeting. What did that originally say? I think it was deferring it originally, and I just put, like, you could either do it that night or the next one. I didn't think that we'd need to defer necessarily. So any thoughts on that, or other edits? I mean, otherwise the edits are pretty simple, it switches Selectmen's office to Town Planner and Interview Subcommittee, in some cases to Planning Board Chair if it was something like scheduling, but other places, I think it was just Planning Board, unless you guys see it differently. Nope, it's otherwise Planning Boards.
The, I think the only one, Carrie, that you didn't touch on was, um, as far as the conflict of interest.
Oh, okay.
The, um, adding that they shall recuse themselves.
Oh, yep, okay.
And, and under the, um, and under the Mass conflict of interest law, um, people recuse, the people, I, I forgot how it's exactly worded, but basically, it's not a shall, but it's a, you know, you should recuse yourself, like, if you feel that you can't be, you know, objective, or if you have, like, a financial interest, or I'm not sure exactly how it's worded, I don't know if you wanna get that.
The family member?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, family member, I think. Um, but, you know, I mean, if you, you know, if you wanted to be that specific to say shall, but.
No, no, I just wanted to somehow reflect that, I don't, I don't feel strongly about, let's see. How was it, but, oh, the reason it was in there before is because it was a subcommittee member, so you had to be able to, if you only had two, and one of them had a s- conflict of interest. And what does define a conflict? It's not really defined, I guess there would just be a conflict, is, is that only a financial interest, I guess?
No, there's, there's a, there's a couple different, at least a couple different things in the open, I mean, excuse me, the conflict of interest law. But again, I don't know if you wanna get that specific, or, or if you should, or just say, you know, should recuse themself, or I, it's.
Or just instead of listing them all, should recuse themselves according to the conflict of interest laws, like?
Oh, whatever, yeah.
Yeah, in accordance with Mass, um, I don't know.
Well, even if they were a family member, does that, I mean, what if my?
I don't think you can, I, I think that's where one of the things, like Amy had mentioned, I think that's one of the things it talks about. Like, you know, you can't, um, you know, like, if your, you know, husband wanted to get on the design review, you couldn't be part of that process. You know, you can be part of the discussion, but you can't be part of the vote.
Okay.
I think that's how it works.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right, and I, I just wanted to reflect it somehow, I wasn't super, um, unless you, unless the board feels.
Which number is it?
It's just three.
It's on the bottom of the first page, Amy.
Um,
Very bottom.
And it was about Interview Subcommittee.
I think that makes sense, it actually shortens it.
Did Anthony give any feedback on this one? Or Michelle, for that matter?
No.
No feedback?
Yeah, I wonder if we should wait for them, or... I don't know. After I read it, 'cause Kathy, you sent it out, and I read your updates, Carrie, and I thought they were all good. I agree.
I mean, I hate to delay it again, is it a problem if we wait for Michelle and Anthony as well? Okay.
No.
I just wanna make sure that they can, if, especially Michelle is a chair for one of these committees. I don't know if, um, there's something, or maybe overlooking, or?
And then if there's a rotation, do we have to add it in here?
I don't, it doesn't seem like it would be.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if it's in here, or if, if you have to add it to the bylaw, to make a bylaw change, but that's what we'll get, we'll get clarification.
All right, we'll cross that bridge. We'll get that. Any other edits? So if we were to take this, um, wait, I know there's one other, I, I thought the other version that we had on file was mostly just crossing out, um, one to the other.
Yeah, that's, that's all I, that's all I did, for starters, to,
Yep.
get you going.
And then something was added for a continuous period of six months, but I, I replicated that edit as well. Under appointment to fill a vacancy? So if you were to leave town or pass away? So I don't know, that was added, um, it made sense to me, though, I thought that made sense. Does anyone feel differently about that timeframe? I don't know who, that must've been Teresa maybe who added that.
The timeframe being?
If someone's missing for six months, we can fill the seat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's our current policy? I remember the letter went out, that, what is it, if you missed three meetings in a row, you'd be reconc- you would?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, but I think it, it's, it's not so much that it was a policy, Carrie, I think it was just a, you know, a, a discussion and decision by the board to say, you know, we wanna send out a letter to folks to let them know that, you know, this is,
They need to show up.
Really, if you, yeah, basically, that was the, the intent.
Okay, so how about, um, if you both agree that we accept these changes in the draft that has my comments on it, and, and then open it and just have one more final look, to have the whole board be able to weigh in
Yeah.
on the actual policy?
Do you, do you want me to change the, and make the reference to the conflict of interest law for that number three, or?
I think you might as well, 'cause then it's all, it's open-ended if we don't.
I mean, I'll get the reference number.
Sure.
I mean, the, you know, the site for the, whatever.
Sure, that's great, thank you. Millie, that's okay with you?
Yes, yeah. Is there actually a minimum or a maximum number of meetings that you would expect somebody to attend? Is there any type of guidance on that? I don't know, I'm just curious.
I don't, I, I, I honestly don't know.
Okay.
I mean, not, there's nothing,
Nothing written, but just, okay, yeah. I was just curious.
Okay, great. And then Town Planner update, anything new?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything new in, um, in it, you know, from what I've said.
Okay, so now, next meetings possibly changed to the fifth? Kathy, you're gonna ask, um, Michelle and Anthony if that works for them?
Yep.
What, the fifth is a Tuesday?
It's a Thursday.
The fifth is Thursday.
Okay. Um, and then next CBA meeting, oh, so.
Do you wanna talk about October meetings?
Sure.
How you wanna, I mean, we,
Well, why don't we do all our meeting schedule with the, when, do you mean scheduling meetings?
Whenever you want.
Yeah, then we don't have to worry about going back. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it has to do with the master plan, too, so we might as well.
Yep.
Plus, we need Anthony to finally come back, I'm afraid he's not.
Hasn't been six months yet.
So the, the only thing I wanna, you know, um, 'cause I'll make an opportunity, if, if you don't wanna go forward with this October twenty-first date, which, which the consultants are available for, but we're putting an ad, the Master Plan Steering Committee is putting an ad in the Applefest guide.
Oh, yeah.
And I have to get that, um, that's due on Friday.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we were gonna put in a half-page ad to come to the, you know, public presentation on September twenty-first, and, you know,
Wait, Sept- are you on September or October?
October, excuse me, October.
So it's just the presentation, there's no vote being taken, it's?
I, I mean, that's entirely up to you and,
Right.
to the, to the Board of Selectmen as to whether you wanna take votes or not.
Well, the Board of Selectmen are welcome to vote however, they can do whatever they want, so that won't be our decision, whether they vote or not. The Planning Board would vote in the following month, so for us, it would be a presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, I mean, that's how I would, that's how I was gonna write it up, is that it's a presentation from the Master Plan Steering Committee and, and our consultants, you know, so come, you know.
What I would want to happen is a, a minutes debacle, so I would just wanna be careful to not have that. Maybe we just make sure that, that all of us can actually attend that day, it's out of the ordinary for our usual schedule, so if we just also check with Michelle and Anthony, if you don't mind, if they could actually make that day?
Sure.
And you guys, obviously, I don't know, I, I think I can, I don't see why not.
I can.
Millie, that works for you?
Yep. I'm still in August here, I gotta move forward. I think I can, I mean, it's so far out.
Wait, you're talking about the September, right?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm playing first.
Oh, yeah.
I'm playing right now.
Yeah, I can.
Okay. Are you still looking?
Mm-hmm, no, I'm fine.
Okay, so I'll, I'll include that in the email tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So do we just sit in the audience, is that what it is? It's like a Selectmen's meeting?
No, it's a, it's a,
It's a joint?
It's a joint meeting. I mean, that, again, that's how we've talked about it.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, that,
Yeah, I don't remember that.
I mean, huh?
I said, I don't remember that, I guess.
Oh, at the,
Until later, I have emails from the beginning, from like Fran and everybody saying, oh, it's the Planning Board who's in charge at the end. So now I, I just feel like it's going over to the Selectmen. And, um,
No, I mean, the, 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 the Mass general law, you know, puts forth that it's the Planning Board, you know, who shall, you know,
Adopt.
organize, or, right, and, you know, and again, in the past, Planning Boards never adopted the master plan. They've never taken a vote to adopt the master plan. So, I mean, that's a choice that you have, you know, you don't have to, you can, you, you can do whatever you want.
And the joint presentation is kind of, um, do whatever you want, too, 'cause it does say you can bring it in front of legislature, but you don't have to, it's all just what your Town Board's doing.
Right, you don't have to go to town meeting, it's recommended.
Yeah, what we've worked on, yeah.
It's, you know, it's just, it's a crazy big document to, you know, expect someone to, you know,
How do you feel, Carrie, about doing the, the presentation at a joint meeting at the Selectmen?
So, and, so what I have, right, so what you're saying is that it doesn't require adoption by local legislative bodies, Town Meeting, Town Council, City Council, but many communities do present it to all of the, so all of the above, just so there's a general acceptance. But in Massachusetts, master plan adoption requires a majority vote of the Planning Board only. So although other boards can vote, or a Town Meeting could vote if they wanted to, but the only real requirement is a Planning Board vote as it relates to the law, is my understanding.
Yeah, and, and again, past Planning Boards have, 'cause I mean, this is the third master plan, the fourth master plan, and the, for, for whatever reason, you know, I mean, we can go back through minutes, but, I mean, for whatever reason, you know, Planning Boards in the past just didn't, they didn't take an official vote, but that's not, I'm just telling you that. That doesn't, that's not right or wrong, you know? So, um, so I mean, if you, you talked about doing that at the, at your following meeting.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So we do that, and we do a hearing. So, I mean, what if we at least see if Michelle and Anthony are even available that night? And then otherwise, I mean, I think ideally it does fall under a Planning Board meeting, but if that's something that the consultants can't do, then obviously we can't, like, I mean, we need to also be mindful of their schedule.
Well, yeah, and, I mean, if they, and if they can't do that, Carrie, I mean, we can, there's still there's the master, you know, the, the Master Plan Steering Committee, you know, the, there's the Chair and the Vice Chair that can make a presentation. I mean, they're gonna be doing the, you know, presentation at the, um, at the joint meeting, that's the intent.
Oh, you mean if we just had our own presentation?
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, I, I, I thought that's where you were going, that if you, if, if at the, at the subsequent Planning Board meeting, where you may take a vote, if, if you wanted a, you said you wanted a public hearing, so I would assume that's, to have a public hearing,
Right.
you better have a presentation. So that would be, you know, again, the, the, the Chair and the Vice Chair. I mean, that's who's gone and done updates.
How do you, Board members? You made the first comment, what do you think is the really good?
Well, I don't know, now I'm just, to have the Steering Committee do it twice. I wonder if we just have a public hearing at the library, but it's a joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Selectmen, and then called by the Planning Board, and then we have the vote the week after. Like, I don't know, I'm just thinking about the committee having to go through it twice.
Yeah, that doesn't seem good to have to do it twice for the committee.
And we'll have to do it twice.
Doesn't look good to work.
Right.
So why don't, um,
But I know some things in the past, they've had, like, the big meetings, like, the fire station's big, so when they have the public hearing, it's at the library. Like, instead of a Selectmen meeting in this room, maybe it should be at the library, and be a public hearing, joint hearing by the Planning Board and the, and the Selectmen. And I've gone to a meeting on marijuana there, too. I went to the public hearing on marijuana years ago, and it was the Selectmen and another board.
I mean, I would love to think that this room would be overflow capacity.
You never know, though. So you don't think anyone's gonna come?
As John Campbell and I look at each other when we do our kickoff, um, when we do our public hearing for the open space plan, 'cause he and I have done a couple of them.
That's it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, you have to hold those.
Okay, well, why don't we even see if there's any availability for the consultants to do otherwise, and if there is even availability for Anthony and Michelle to do that twenty-first meeting? And then maybe we just regroup tomorrow, or, I don't wanna exclude, um, how do I? You can communicate with, um, Michelle and Anthony over the dates, okay?
Sure.
So, I don't, yeah, and I'm thinking, like you were just saying, too, maybe the public hearing should be the same time as the joint hearing. So, I don't, yeah, and I'm thinking, like you were just saying too, maybe the public hearing should be the same time as the joint hearing. Okay. But I feel it should be under us, because it's under our purview, and I think we had problems with the minutes before. And I don't know.
I don't, well, I mean, I don't, you know, you're, you're the board members, but I mean, I think it's kind of semantics to me. I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, if it's a joint meeting, it's a joint meeting.
Right.
You know, I mean, I don't, you know, who calls it? I don't know what that means, because I mean, you both.
So we're going to have two sets of meetings again?
You both have to.
Minutes?
Well, I mean, if that, if that's what you want to do, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have to do that, but if that's what you want to do. But, I mean, I don't think the meetings are the, you know, the, the issue here.
Critical.
Yeah.
I just know if we did the minutes and we had an issue that was five words, and the Board of Selectmen came to us and said, you know, can you take out these five words? We would have said, okay, you know, and so I feel like, I don't know. And I'm not trying to start a war here, but I feel like it's under our purview, and we had issues in the past, and they weren't willing to work with us.
The Board of Selectmen?
Well, I mean, it was just fi, I read in the Robert's Rules, if it's, you know, if something really quick, like five words that could be deleted, you can do that, and it's not a big issue. But now it's turned into this big issue. I guess, or anything else that could go wrong. I feel like.
Well, then in that case, we just don't have to take two, we'd have to, no one in advance, we're just going to take, Elaine would just have to take a set. We'd have to take two sets of minutes.
Yeah.
So for that.
I just want the, the committees to work together.
I, I think if we could maybe try it one more time and see if it happens again, you know, I don't know.
Okay, so then again, that, we're just circling down on that. Why don't we see what happens? Get Michelle and Anthony's availability, see the consultant's availability, and then tomorrow, maybe we just have a quick conversation and just solve it. So we don't have to be here till the end of time.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next CBA meeting is.
Jason's raising his hand.
Oh, Jason.
First of all, I just want to make it clear that there hasn't been any, um, intent not to cooperate in any minutes corrected. It's an ambiguous situation, because we haven't typically had minutes that are controversial, if you want to call that. I have seen Amy's message specifically about the issue we've already, um, have planned, attributed to the planning board at Gratham and Shetland. I'll be with that intention. I reviewed the video myself for that particular segment, and I agree with you. And it's my intention to bring forward a corrected minutes at our next selectmen meeting, which will be on Monday, August nineteenth.
Oh, great, thank you.
I don't anticipate we will substantially revise our minutes in any other way, but at least to that point, that is very factual. I think we're certainly going to do that revision. And again, it's, it's only taking place because this is our next selectmen meeting, um, where we have the information from the planning board as to address the particular concern. The other issue as far as a presentation or public hearing with respect to the master plan steering committee. If you want to hold something like a public hearing with both of the boards in attendance to be conducted by the planning board, I don't know that the Board of Selectmen has really a strong interest in, in doing much more than being present to hear what the information is. And if you would like to take the lead in drafting the minutes of that meeting and presenting it to us for our consideration and approval of minutes, that would be perfectly fine.
Well, that might be a better use of town resources than having both sets of people drop two minutes.
And we agree, it doesn't make sense for the consultant and staff to afford two different presentations between the boards.
To go through, right, right. Yeah. Two minutes, two board, right.
Plus the complication of a public hearing. Let's try to find a date or something where both boards and the public can be present. And then we can follow the process after that in our respective meetings. And to that end, the Board of Selectmen can defer action on minutes until the planning board has produced their comment for the Board of Selectmen's review.
Okay, so then that, does that alleviate some of that, that concern then, that maybe we?
That's for me.
Yeah.
I just want to work together.
I'm not aware that we are working.
I know, I know.
Okay, so thank you for clarifying that. That's a, that's good to know. So then why don't we touch base tomorrow and just figure out date-wise, how we can make this all.
So, so the, so I did, I mean, you know, I can find out another date from the consultant, that, that's fine. But I just, you know, that's just the date that we had worked out in-house, and, um, so if the twenty-first, you know, if you don't want to do it on a Monday night, if you, whatever, you know.
Okay, well, we just want to make sure whatever goes in the book, we're, we're ready to roll on that date. Whatever goes in the Applefest guide.
Yep.
Right.
And, okay.
So, I mean, again, if, if we stick with the twenty, you know, if it works for Michelle and Anthony, and if we, we stick with the twenty-first, you know, we can also do it at like six o'clock or something. You know, I mean, if you want a completely separated, you know, if the selectmen are meeting, you know, they're going to continue to meet that night. You know, if you wanted to, you know, just do it as a, as a separate meeting, but it's that night. Just because I know they're available and I have a Friday day.
Is there, um, any merit to try, you really don't think we'll get crowds? Like, we should try to do the library, or I don't know if.
We can, I mean, I have no, you know, if, if the library's available, I mean, most of the time we've found it to be available, um, you know.
Well, because you have a nice projector there, or, oh, I guess over there is our projector wall.
And we can play it up, you know, here we go. We can even promote it at Applefest, right.
Well, that's why we want to put it in the Applefest guidebook. So that's, that's really what I'm working against.
Right, right.
I don't care when we have the meeting. I just need to know by Friday, so that.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and, and again, October twenty-first was, was randomly chosen, because it's not a regular night of the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, it isn't?
Um, and so that worked with the consultant, and then I went from there with, with the twenty-first. So, so the Board of Selectmen, you're meeting that night because you're, you normally would meet the night, the week before. But I think that's the Columbus Day weekend, so, I mean, that's, you know, I arrived at October twenty-first with the consultants, not with, you know, because no one was meeting on the twenty-first.
I would hope we can meet at the library. I don't know, and maybe I'll be wrong and nobody will show up. But I'd feel bad if people did show up and there weren't enough seats.
Mm-hmm.
Not that there are times to see it at the library either, when we sit all around. I don't know.
Okay, so maybe, do you want me to call the library?
No, I'll talk, I, I'll call.
What do you guys think? Do you think we should do it here at the library?
Well, I'm just thinking that it's a nicer setting for people. It's less, um, there's a little more room, there's a nice, like, projector. Is there a projector? Am I making that up? There is.
Well, we bring in a projector. There's a screen, there's a real screen.
Would look better there, probably.
Looks nicer.
We just need someone to tape it. Because there are a lot of people probably watch it that don't come that are watching it from home in their pajamas or. He'll be there. Okay, we have him for the twenty-first, Dave. And does six work for people, or should we just do it at seven? Like, I don't know about Anthony and Michelle with working, six might be hard early, too early.
You're going to talk to them, I can't, I have a nerve.
Because it doesn't matter to me. It's up to everybody else on the time.
Okay, does that answer what we need for now? All right, great. So, ZBA?
Yep, so for the next CBA meeting, um, you know, there always is four Tuesday. Um, the only application for the August meeting is, um, four twenty-nine, uh, excuse me, four twenty-five Whitney Street, which is a vacant building right now, and, um, the Sterus Corporation has purchased that building. Sterus is also, some people know it as Isometrics, um, and they, they exist, they've been a long time, um, um, company in this town, um, out on Whitney Street. So they have purchased four twenty-five Whitney Street, and they need to make, uh, do an addition, um, on that building. And, um, so their application is for a variance for one of the setbacks.
Do you know what the addition's for? Like what they're going to store in it?
Yeah, they, that's where they're doing their, um, uh, what, what they do is they sterilize medical equipment. And so they're moving their sterilization equipment over to four twenty-five Whitney Street.
What about, um, Rice App? Did you get an updated application from him yet?
Nope, nope, he's, he talks to him just about every day. Talked to him today twice. So, um, he's anticipating that he will have it, um, to us by August twenty-second, which is the deadline.
Oh, okay.
Um, for the September ZBA meeting.
When you get it, can you email it out to the board?
Yeah. No, yep, I said I would do that, no problem.
Okay, thanks. Joint meeting with them, do they, any feedback?
No, I wasn't at their last meeting, Carrie. I had asked them to, to discuss it. But they only, my, my take on it is, what, because Debbie takes the minutes for it, and, um, she said they were done in about like seventeen minutes. And she said, no, keep it in there.
Okay.
So I'm at their next, uh, you know, I'll be at their next meeting, so I'll put it on their agenda again.
Who is, is Brad the chair still, or is there a different, or does he?
Uh, Brad's, yep, Brad's the chair. I, oh, I don't know if they did, I don't know if they did, um, reappointment at their, at their, I didn't even ask.
Okay.
At their last meeting. I think I had it on their agenda. Um, I'll check with Debbie tomorrow, but.
Okay. All right, great. So, but the same, it's the same purpose for the joint meeting, is basically just so we can kind of figure out.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, you know, that's my intention is to ask them, you know, in person. I'll be, I'll be at their meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, um, anything else that we need to cover? I think that's it, that's it for the agenda.
I was just wondering, um, back to the hazardous waste, well, it's not going to be September seventeenth, well, for the hazardous waste, that's just so.
If they, if they're able to get, they, meaning central mass, if they're able to get some information, they'll, they'll have it for us for that meeting. But the main purpose will be for solar, and, and, um, and then, you know, whatever we can, whatever we come up with between now and October, uh, excuse me, September, um, but it may not be until October.
Okay. I was just thinking, if we have hazardous waste, should we invite the Board of Health person? I keep thinking Jamie, and I know it's not Jamie, but.
No, oh, well, Casey Mallon is, is our Board of Health agent.
Should he be invited to the meeting so he can be up to date on the latest?
Yeah, I mean, he, he gets, he gets, you know, a copy of every agenda. I mean, I can certainly, you know, ask him specifically if he would want to come.
Right, because I think we had talked that he had to play a part in the bylaw, and if he does, maybe he should.
Yeah, the Board of Health would be.
He should come in and learn too, for the latest and greatest.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
No, second.
Second.
I was unsure what I needed to say. I tried.
Nope, good job. All right, all in favor?
I thought you were second. I'm like, I'm the favorite.
We got a motion to close it.
I think this is the first time we've ever had.